I'd like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library meeting for December 11th, 2023 at 6:32. What stands for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Jan Gaffney absent, Alison McBaden Keesling absent, Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Alan Fander absent, Marilyn Pomeroy?
Here.
Maggie Sands?
Here.
Chris Schell?
Here.
Julie Meredith here.
I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We have a call to the public. The public is doing Christmas shopping. Accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. There are six items. Does anyone wish to discuss any item? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion is carried. Okay, library statistics.
So I thought I would do something a little different with the statistics this evening since it's nice talking about what's been going up and down or whatever. But I thought what I would do is, since Bill goes to all this trouble to do this day of the week average summary, I just thought it was interesting for the traffic within the library, Monday is the busiest day, followed by Sunday, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. In terms of the highest circulation, I thought this was interesting. The busiest circulation day is Thursday, although it's the sixth busiest traffic day. I thought that was interesting. So Thursday, Monday, Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday for circulation. I always think of Saturdays as being really busy, but they're at the bottom of the list here. In terms of questions, Sunday is our busiest day, which is interesting because we're only open half the day, followed by Monday. And Friday, which Friday is only the fourth busiest traffic day, but it's the third busiest question day. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, and Saturday. In terms of conversion, so the conversion is the highest number of books checked or items checked out per person that comes into the building, or the average number of books checked out per person. So Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, Saturday is the busiest day with people checking out the most books when they visit, followed by Sunday, then Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Thursday, and Wednesday. In terms of Wi-Fi usage, Sunday and Monday are tied for first, and then Wednesday. And in terms of computers, Monday is the busiest day, followed by Sunday. Sunday and Monday are big computer days, apparently. So I just thought it was interesting. I thought I would look at something a little bit different in terms of the statistics.
Well, knowing that statistics, would it change your mind on anything you do for staffing?
It actually does. The reason we track these traffic patterns so specifically, and Bill can even run us a report so that we know hour by hour, and if we struggle budgetarily, or just if we're having trouble having enough people, we will plan accordingly. I call it the retail model of scheduling in that if we know that we're not busy between three and five, then we'll schedule less people. We know 10:00 AM on the Thursday of a book talk day or a book group day, we're going to be really, really busy, so we make sure to have extra people. The day after we've been closed for a holiday is really busy. So we track all of this, so we have that data.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So he does all of this crunching of numbers, but we don't always talk about it. So I felt like I should give him a nod for working so hard to pull it together. He does, he does.
Next, I'd like the friends of the library report.
Thanks, this is Jim Grommey, friends. We have not had as more yet since our last meeting, so I don't have a follow-up report for you. I would like to use to just a reminder, for our book sale comes January, it's a whole book sale, February 14th, I think, pardon the hangman. And that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. That'll be another good statistical thing to track, to start to look at how that goes. Library directors' report.
So it is my pleasure to announce that at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala and Awards Dinner, the Clarkston Independence District Library was awarded Nonprofit of the Year. It was a festive night celebrating organizations and individuals that make Clarkston a great place to live, work, and play. Sissy Phillips, David Silverman, and I were in attendance. We were surprised, we didn't know we were going to win, humbled and honored to be recognized. And I want to thank the library's staff board and friends for the passionate hard work you put in every day to make the library a gem of a community. It was really a funny night.
That's terrific.
It was very exciting, very, very exciting.
And you all look dashing in the photo.
Oh, thank you. Considering we didn't know we were dressing for an award photo. We are in the final stages of the library's fire alarm system replacement. This week, IQ Life Safety Systems will be working with the technician that has been installing the system to test the various features. Next week, the fire marshal is tentatively scheduled to review the work and sign off on the permit. So it's almost time to be done with that. And then Friday, the staff will have a training on the new control panel. Yeah.
I don't believe it.
We're not going to get too ahead of ourselves.
We'll just wait, we'll celebrate after the fact.
We'll celebrate after the fact, yeah, we don't get ahead of that.
Also, we do not want to inaugurate the system.
No, please don't, please don't. No, but it does have some nice features in terms of the control panel is much more specific than it used to be. So if there's something that's glitchy within the system, the control panel will tell you exactly which one is... So if it's a smoke detector in one of the ducts, it will tell you which duct. So it's much nicer. It's much smarter than the old system. The old system was very analog. $33,000.
Okay. You won one of that.
No, no, no. And it ended up being less than what we, by the time they got to it, the price had gone down, which was surprising. Nothing else has.
Wow.
But that one had gone down a couple thousand dollars.
Big worry.
At the November meeting, the library board reviewed some investment options for the library's fund balance. It was decided that further information is needed. Jan Gaffney, Nancy Moon, and I will meet with Jennifer Mall from Flagstar to learn more about the SIDAres program that she proposed. We attempted to set up a meeting time right away, but everyone's December schedules were just too full. So we will set up a meeting at the beginning of the new year. So we won't have a report probably till February. I don't know that we'll be able to squeeze it in before that first board meeting, but we'll see. And then Nicole Evans and I have been working with the vendors on the board-approved list to get our new ACH payment system up. Each vendor does this differently. Some vendors are prepared to supply the necessary details, while others have required several calls and emails to track down the needed information. We have successfully paid three vendors this way and continue to work on getting the others set up. And I want to thank Melissa Schulman, who's our new contracted accountant, for her support in making the corresponding QuickBooks procedures.
So do you think it's going to be workable?
It is.
I mean, it seems involved.
The most involved part is just gathering the information. When you call and say, we want to do electronic funds transfer, they say, you want to do what? And then they want our bank account number because they want to pull the money from our account, but we want to push it like direct deposit into their account. So sometimes you have to call around until you find the right person.
That's important.
Yeah. And that's where we've been running into trouble because they want, they say, well, you just give us your bank account. No, 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 we're not doing that. We want your bank account number and we'll push it in your direction.
Particularly given the troubles we've had with checks.
Exactly, yeah, they're not pulling anything out of our bank account. So it's been a little bit tedious, but we're getting there. As I said, some of them have been easier than others.
Soon as they get more used to doing this with more customers.
Well, some of the companies you call and say, hey, we want to do electronic funds transfer, we'd like to do ACH, and they're like, great! And they send you a PDF of everything you need and exactly how they want it labeled when it comes, so that you add this account number and put it here, so that when we get it, we know how to credit your account, whatever. And the other ones, they're like, you want to do what? It is what it is. It's an adventure.
All right, let's move to regular business. Number one, the final year-end budget adjustments.
Okay, so before you, you have the accountant's report, and I'm going to go through it. I have things highlighted on mine. And then you also have a list of proposed budget adjustments, and I'm going to go through those one by one. So the first thing that I want to talk about, just a couple of things that were questions previously, we have gotten both of our state aid payments, and state aid is up from last year. Our interest income is up from last year. Our book fine money, even though we're not actually doing fines, these would be like replacements. So if somebody loses a book and pays for it. So that's up a little bit this year. Penal fine money is about what I expected it to be. We did for 2024 budget for a little bit less because we don't always know what that penal fine money is going to look like, and it has been going down somewhat, so we're preparing for that. E-rate money, while it says here it has not come in, it actually has, but it did not come in by November 30th. So this is a year-to-date for November 30th. So that will show up, it will be credited to our account before the end of the year. It's just the check didn't get deposited before the 30th. It came in, I think, December 1st. Let's see. So hopping down to actual expenditures, the full-time wages are actually in pretty good shape. I'm not worried there. But you'll notice that the part-time is over budget. Not only is it over budget now, but we have three more payrolls coming up, so it will continue to be over budget. Now, we knew this was going to happen, and that is because at the end of last year, we had a full-time person in the technical services department resign. And I talked to Brad about what he wanted to do, and he said he would rather have part-time employees. So we determined that we would make that full-time position a librarian, and you'll remember, we hired a collaborations librarian. So that's why the full-time numbers are still correct. We hired a librarian and put that in the position. What we decided after talking to the staffing committee was that we would let Brad do some restructuring of his department. And so based on his hiring of some part-time employees, we knew we were going to be over budget, but we wanted to wait until he kind of figured out what he needed. And he hired a couple of additional people. The other reason we're a little bit over budget is that we have had a lot of turnover in the circulation department. And what happens every time we turn somebody over is that we have to schedule extra people because, of course, you have to have somebody to train and a trainee, and then somebody to kind of run the desk to kind of keep things. So there's a little bit of extra. So this is a little more over budget than what we would have anticipated for just that part-time. But we knew it was coming. So I am going to propose that we take $52,000 from fund balance and put it in for covering that part-time money. And then if you pop down to the next thing, FICA, we need to balance out FICA for that. And so I'm proposing that we add $6,800 from fund balance for that, and that will get us back in place. Now, for 2024, we already are prepared for this, but remember, this all happened after the budget was approved in September, so we went into 2023 knowing that this was going to be a problem. And so every time we would talk about this, I'd say, well, let's wait till the end of the year. I don't like to make big budget adjustments until we know how much it's going to be. I don't want to make this budget adjustments every few months. I want to wait until we know exactly what it is going to be, especially considering Brad was basically, what he decided to do was take employees he already had and train them into some of the more sophisticated positions, and then hire a couple of outside people to fill some of the more entry-level positions. So he was doing some restructuring and trying to determine who was going to be doing which tasks and rewriting job descriptions. And in January, February, the staffing committee has been going over all those job descriptions that have been rewritten or re-updated, I wouldn't say rewritten, but updated by the staff. And in January, February, we'll be seeing all of those in little batches so that you don't have to read all the long ones. But we'll be updating those, and you get to approve those, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So in total, our budget for salaries and wages will be higher next year than it is this year?
It already is higher. We wrote it in, knowing that those changes were going to be made, but I didn't know what they were going to look like by the end of the year. Because the other thing that sometimes happens is if you turn over staff, especially full-time staff, by the time the full-time staff leave, and our process for replacement is pretty long because we have to do a selection committee, and then we have to do an appointment, and by the time we do that, there's usually a hole. And when that happens, we often, especially a librarian hole, we fill in with our part-time librarians until we get that full-time position filled. And so that sometimes throws off that part-time number as well. And sometimes in that case, what we do is take money from the full-time budget and put it into the part-time budget in order to kind of balance that. In this case, that's not what was going on, but we never know when that's going to happen. And so I try really hard to not throw more money into the budget until I kind of know what's really going to happen with it, so.
Which is a difficult thing to predict, but just sort of, I'll have to go back and review the budget that we approved for next year, just in terms of how it's running in comparison, just to make sure that, you know, you always run a very conservative budget, but, you know...
It is significantly higher in part-time, knowing that we were going to have those additional positions, so.
I have to remind myself on that.
By the time we wrote and approved that August and September approval budget, we knew more what Brad was going to be doing. What we didn't know was if we would potentially be losing any of those full-timers before the end of the year. So I probably could have come to you at the time we were writing that 2024 budget and said, hey, let's go ahead and plug in this money, I think I know what's going to happen. But I hate doing more budget adjustments than necessary because it just creates extra work in terms of the finances.
Yeah, and the people will come back and say, hey, what's this?
Yeah, why do you keep, do you really not know? Do you just keep adding money, do you keep adding money? But I like to do end-of-year budget adjustments in order to accommodate those things. Okay, so working our way down the list, the next one is our health insurance, and that one, I am proposing a budget adjustment from fund balance of $15,000. That one's over budget. It's over budget for a couple of different reasons. The one reason it's over budget is because we've had some changes in staffing, and we've had some changes in the number of people that we're covering in the plan and that sort of thing. But the other thing that's going on here is that I want to make sure there's enough money in this particular budget because I don't know that when the accountant did this particular run, that she accurately pulled out accounting for the appropriate years. So for example, we pay for January and December, and we pay for, you know, the next year we pay for, and she pulls, when we pull, she pulls it into the appropriate year. So if you pay for January and December, she will take that amount of money and she will put it in January. And then this year, when we pay for January and December, she will push it into next year's budget. We call them prepaid's. And it's a government finance sort of thing. But I'm not sure for this particular line, I didn't feel confident when I went in and double-checked it, so I would like to put the money in there to make sure that we don't inadvertently go over budget. I think when it balances all out, that month, some of that money will end up reverting back to fund balance. But I don't feel confident with this one.
Is it an automatic refund or reversion?
Yep, it just reverts. Anything that's sort of at the end of the year when we balance everything out, anything that we've put in, it basically just reverts back to fund balance, so. But we don't want to go into audit and have anything that shows up as a negative number, so.
One last question.
Yes.
Do you know off the top of your head what the fund balance is?
It is about $3 million. It's very, very healthy right now. It is because we have all of those capital projects coming up.
Yes, I kind of remember that, I just couldn't remember the number. Thank you.
Okay, so the next few pieces that we have, we have retirement, which is listed as MERS, and I'm proposing a little bit extra in there, $1,900. That's just a difference in the amount of money that some of our employees were being paid, so we budgeted for a slightly less expensive employee, anyway, when we wrote this budget. Same thing for what's listed here as OPEB, which is actually HCSP. That's our healthcare savings plan. That's our retire, the retirement plan that is for healthcare specifically, so, retiree healthcare. And I'm proposing $1,400 for that. And then workers' comp, that one, when they do the audit mid-year, if we have any changes in the breakdown of our employees, so if we have more custodial and less clerical or more clerical and custodial, the amount that we have to pay is based on the type of positions that we have. And when they do the audit, sometimes they balance that number, and we either end up with extra money or over budget. In this case, we're over budget a little bit. And I'm proposing we put in $800 for that. We don't owe any more, but it is over budget. So those three, I'm going to propose, we take that out of line 980. We have some extra money in that budget. 980 is our equipment budget, that's Bill's budget. He keeps, we always give him a budget of about $10,000. We call it the break-fix budget. That's the money that he uses for emergency breaks, anything that just dies unexpectedly. And he had very little of that this year, fortunately, so there's a little bit of a cushion there.
Now, is that where the laminator would be, or is that...
That is where the laminator would be, and I am still replacing the laminator, and despite that, I still have enough money to cover these little over-budget glitches, so. And he knows that, and I asked him, like, you don't have any surprise things you're going to buy between now and the end of the year? And he said, no, so. So I think we're good there. So moving to the next page, these next couple are really easy. Technically, you don't actually have to do these budget adjustments. So when the board approves a budget, you approve it at a higher level. You approve 881, which is the event budget, which is programming. And you approve the big picture, the big amount of $55,000. And then the department heads and I sit down together, and we break it down in between adult, child, teen, miscellaneous, business, campaigns and promotions, maker space. In this particular case, we break it out so you can see it, but pretty much, those are the things I'm allowed to kind of move around on my own. But since we can see it, and it is the end of the year, I'm going to go ahead and tell you what I plan to do. So we have a miscellaneous budget in that particular line item. The miscellaneous budget is sort of my little fund that when one of the librarians comes scurrying to me and says, oh, my gosh, I'm going to go over budget, I have a little money that I can kind of plug in there and help them out with it. And I usually keep about $5,000 there, and so I'm going to help them plug that little hole. So I'm going to give $2,500 to the adult department and $2,400 to the children's department out of that miscellaneous line. And I've written those in as budget adjustments, and you can approve them with the others, but technically, that's something that I would be able to do on my own. The next one is the telephone bill. That one is a little bit hard to predict, and it's, we have one more payment left, one more invoice coming in. I pulled those and looked, and so I'm going to ask to add about $500 to that, and that I can take from the equipment budget. The next one is insurance, and we talked about that. So the insurance bill we pay in installments, and it is completely paid by July. And then usually, we get reimbursement. We have these two pools of money, and if there are not a lot of claims, that all of the members pool that money, and we get reimbursements if that fund goes over a certain amount. We have gotten our reimbursements for the year, and usually, we budget so that when those reimbursements come in, we're not putting a whole bunch of money into that line and having it revert back to fund balance. We didn't get as much back this year, and so there's a little bit of an over-budget there of $2,100. I'm going to propose we take that from the refunds and rebates line, that's at 964 down at the bottom. So that's the money we hold aside when Board of Review happens in April. Sometimes people will go to Board of Review to the assessors committee and ask to have their taxes reduced because they feel that their assessment is not correct. If they are awarded in Board of Review, then Oakland County will bill us and say, hey, you owe us X amount of dollars in returned taxes because Oakland County has paid somebody back. We set money aside to make sure that there's money in the budget, that if we get asked to do that, we have money to do that. And we haven't had very much of that this year, just, where is it? 964, just $467 that we were returned this year, and we had $5,000 budgeted. So there's $4,533 in that budget. So I'm going to propose we use that to fill that insurance hole. It's a comparable sort of thing. Next thing is our subscription budget. The subscriptions, there are a couple of things that happened in subscriptions. One is that we had, you'll remember all the trouble that we had with Baker &amp; Taylor, we have to keep talking about Baker &amp; Taylor. One of the things that happened with Baker &amp; Taylor is that there were some, we pay for a service from them that isn't ordering service. It's an online software, and it has a subscription fee attached to it. For whatever reason during the pandemic, 2020, 2021, and 2022, those bills were being emailed to who knows where. They never got to us, we did not pay them, we did not know we needed to pay them. In the whole balancing of the budgets and reconciliation of our accounts with Baker &amp; Taylor, we have found out that there were three invoices that did not get paid, that were for those services. So we needed to pay those, and it comes out of the subscription budget because it is a subscription for a database service. Unfortunately, we didn't budget for those. They were budgeted in 2021 and 22, so obviously, the money that was in that line item went back into fund balance. In this particular case, I'm going to suggest that because the money is already in the budget, let's not take it out of fund balance and plug it back in. The money that's in that equipment budget will revert back to fund balance if we don't use it, so let's just shift it from that equipment budget and put it in there and cover with it, so. You look like you have a question.
No, I was just thinking, and I wasn't on the board, obviously, in those years during the pandemic, and I suppose it was a little harder to track on things, but just that, was that a cost, a reoccurring cost we had prior to the pandemic that continued through and, you know, our system sort of, I'm just thinking about accounting system upgrade needs, like some of these things that when you miss, what is a regularly occurring invoice, you know, there should be sort of a flag.
In this particular case, normally, we catch those things, but in 2021 and 22, that's when we went from a system by which everything was coming in the mail, Baker &amp; Taylor was mailing everything, to companies that were working from home, suddenly and randomly deciding they were going to email us invoices without telling us that that's how they were going to send us their invoices. It was making it really difficult for us to track what was getting paid, what wasn't getting paid, and where those invoices were going. Those particular ones just got lost in the shuffle. And honestly, it was hard for us to realize that we were not paying a couple of invoices because there were a number of companies that, in order to keep business, offered a lot of discounts on databases that we were using. And so that budget had a lot of extra money in it in 2021 and 22. And so when we were kind of doing our normal scan to see, is everything getting paid? You'll see, I keep a pretty tight ship in terms of how much I put in each line item. There's a lot of money left over, and we were having a really hard time figuring out why, just because so much of it was being done from home and so much of the invoicing was not getting to us. And when you would call and ask them about it, people just didn't know. So there was a lot of reconciliation that happened after the fact, and I'm hoping that this is the last of it.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
So now, part of this savings would be when we redid our whole QuickBooks situation to try and ferret out any of these issues?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and we had some...
That wouldn't flag it, though, would it?
It wouldn't, but we also had some turnover in staff. So just the whole system by which we normally track these things. So the administrative assistants and I track these things. The one who does the finance work, she and I sit down and look at these on a regular basis, and we kind of try to decide, is everything coming in and whatever? In 2021 and 22, we turned over, we hadn't turned over staff like that in years.
Sure, that makes sense.
And we turned over probably 50% of our staff, and that was unbelievable at the time. So just trying to get everybody up to speed and trying to make sure things were getting done and caught, it was just a really hard time. So unfortunately, some things fell through the cracks, and this particular one, interestingly, they didn't catch it until recently either, and it was when we were doing the reconciliation, they didn't know that it hadn't gotten done.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah. Okay. So the next thing on the list, let's see. Oh, this one's an operating cost. This is another one that is like the programming budget. You wouldn't necessarily need to approve this budget adjustment because we're just going between secondary lines of a more overarching line item. So it's the operating supplies is split into three budgets. There's the main operating supplies for the whole building, there's the technical services supplies, so that's Brad's department, and it's all of the pieces and parts that we use for processing tape and labels and those kinds of things. And then there's circulation supplies, and that's library cards and tape for the receipt printers and things like that. And we divide that out so we can kind of keep track of where the money is going. You know, the main operating line is all of the paper we use in the building for all the printers and the cartridges and things like that, but the other ones are more specific[1794.08] But the other ones are more specific to the various departments. And it helps us sort of ferret out where we can find cost savings. Brad wanted to do some additional purchasing. There were some good prices coming in on some of the supplies that he needed. And he asked if he could have a boost in his budget. And so I'm proposing that we take some $500 from the regular operating budget, because there's some money in that line, and put it into Brad's budget to cover. Like I said, that's another one of those ones that I would be able to do without really saying anything to you. But I wanted to point it out to you because you're seeing the whole thing at the end of the year. So you can talk about that and think about that.
So in essence, we have three items that are going, are coming out of fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
All of the others are transfers within the current budget.
Yes.
Where we had excess here.
Excess here, excess there, yep. Yep.
Issues there.
Yep. And so then I'm popping down to the very bottom. And so in that refunds and rebates, just pointing out that there was $4,533 and we're not using all of that. So that's one of the ones where I'm taking from. The building budget, there's a lot of money left in the building budget, $56,314. Two items that are waiting to be paid out of that. Item number one is that $33,000 for the fire alarm system. We are hoping that they're going to get that done. And we are going to cut that check before December 31st. But I don't know, if we don't, it will revert to fund balance. And I will be coming to you in January and asking you to stick it back into the budget. I'm hoping that's not going to happen. The other project that's in there is the lobby furniture, which was supposed to come in at the end of October, beginning of November, and it has been delayed. So my fingers are crossed that that's another one. We'll be cutting that check before the end of the year. But if not, that's another one. I'm just forewarning you that I would be coming back and asking to take that money from fund balance and add it back into the budget.
And that totals about 56.
And it totals about 56, yeah. Yep. Yeah, the furniture in the lobby is original to the, to the 92 buildings.
92 buildings.
Yep, yep.
Actually held out quite well.
We take good care of our, we take good care of our toys. We do. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention was just that equipment budget. You can see that there's a chunk of money there that we don't have a lot of expenses coming out of that for the rest of the year. So that's where we dipped into. Any questions about any of that? Feel confident that all is okay?
Always confident if we're in the black.
So then what I would recommend that you might want to do is make a motion to approve the recommended budget adjustments as presented. And then you don't have to read them all off. And then what I will do is just put that in the minutes. Because you've got a spreadsheet of everything that I've asked for.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the recommended budget adjustments. I'll see, December 2023, is that all you need?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the recommended budget adjustments for 2023. Look at those items will be entered into the minutes. Any questions or comments?
One point of discussion, Julie.
Yes.
Your head librarians in all the departments. Do they all have training on managing their budgets as well?
They do. Yeah. And we, we actually manage them as a team. So when we do our department head meetings, we always have a check in on the budgets. This year, they, they had some, most of what happened in the going over budget and the, and the programming and whatever, more happened because they were balancing things that we were buying along with things that the friends were buying. And I think they sort of lost track a little bit of, I have a feeling that when we get to the end of the year, some of that money is actually going to be reimbursed by the friends. But I'm a little bit worried that if those checks don't come in before December 31st from the friends. Yeah, that, that we, I don't want to go over budget from our auditor's perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So that's the conservative.
Yes, yes.
We'd like to stay on good terms with our auditors.
And with the friends.
And with the friends, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommended budget adjustments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Number two.
Looking forward to putting that budget to bed.
Now, the approval of the strategic planning consultant contract.
All right. So our strategic planning consultant selection committee consisted of Bill Bowman, Jim Drelle, Jamie Kloss, Julie Meredith, Nancy Moon, Sissy Phillips, Maggie Sands, and Stacia Seraphin. So an RFP for strategic planning was posted in September. Five proposals were received. A selection committee was formed. The committee reviewed the proposals, discussed each submission, and narrowed the field to two candidates. Feedback about the strategic planning experience with each consultant firm was requested from the director and one staff member of a Michigan library on, from the list of references of each firm. The final two firms were invited to provide a 15-minute presentation and 30-minute question and answer session for the selection committee. Upon completion of this review process, the selection committee considered all of the information and feedback in order to make a recommendation. The selection committee recommends Fast Forward Libraries, their philosophy, collaborative process, and the approachability of their team appealed to the committee members. They provide both English and Spanish translations of the community survey. They provide flexibility in their process to assure a great fit for each library. And the feedback from both the director and the staff references was also very positive. This is a budgeted program or project. And because I've got committee members here, three actually, besides myself, I kept it a little bit stripped down in what I said because I thought there might be room for discussion and conversation.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up, we talked about it, our strategic planning technology review. And Fast Forward did not detail that in their proposal and was wondering how we're going to move forward with that aspect.
So one of the things that the committee asked me to do was contact Amanda Standifer, who is the, the lead, the principal of Fast Forward Libraries, and ask about doing a tech review. And she said that actually, it's, it's common for them to collaborate with an outside consultant on that. And Bill had mentioned a consultant that he knew. And then Amanda had mentioned a consultant that she knew. And that they really appreciate bringing in a secondary consultant to do that work. So I think what, what the committee and what Bill would like to do is select a consultant to come in and do that work in tandem with our strategic planning process. And to make sure that we're getting the best fit in terms of a technology consultant that we can.
So would we put out an RFP for such a person?
I think we would, yeah. I think the, I think the best way to do that would be for Bill to kind of put together what he's hoping to see from that person. And also have a conversation with Fast Forward Libraries and see what has been done by other libraries. So we kind of know what we want to ask for. And they were more than happy to do that. So, yeah, we'll put out an RFP. It wouldn't have to be as lengthy and involved as this one. It could be pretty quick. We know of at least two consultants, but I'm sure that there are also more in the, throughout the United States or even just locally that could help us with that.
I am, I'll echo Nancy's interest, and I know, Julie, you have some as well, on the technology consultant as much for what is needed inside the library, but also in tandem with the community survey that finds out where residents and users of the library hope to go in terms of technology and what's going to serve their needs because it is rapidly evolving. And I think we have to have the right investment in order to make sure we're meeting the needs of students and citizens of the area and the library users. So I think that that's a high priority as I see the proposal. I will just add my endorsement to Fast Forward Libraries. I think they did, they give all appearances to be, they're going to be very easy to work with, very professional. I think their approach to making sure that we're getting good community feedback and understanding the needs of the community for today and for the future. I think they express that well. And I think that's an important part of how we go forward. And it was clear that, that while they have ideas about some, some of the best practice, best practices that are out there, they also are making a lot of room to allow for what will come out of the process and what this library team, both staff and you as a leader in the board, are looking for. So I'm confident with the choice you've made.
And as a member of the board who's been through three or four strategic planning processes, I definitely want to give the, this committee, I know how difficult this is. And this packet, you see how thick this is? So when you think about four or five thick packets to go through and discuss, you deserve all of our accolades. Thank you.
There is also one more piece that Amanda did provide. And it was the learning report for, a sample learning report from another library. It was a 78-page document. And if anybody would like to see their, a sample of their learning report, I did bring it if you wanted to flip through it and take a look at it. I didn't send it out via email to everyone because it's such a large file that I wasn't sure if it would make it through everybody's email. But, but I did print one if people want to flip through and see the kinds of things that they produce. They have a really nice program where they, they have the, the learn portion of it. And then they have sort of the dream portion of it where they have retreats where we come together and dream about what comes next based on what we've learned. And then do, which is create the plan. And then a worker's, a work plan where we determine how we're going to follow through with those two steps. So I'm really excited about it.
Important for us to make sure we're advertising well those opportunities for the community to come in and share their opinion.
Absolutely.
Because maybe some of the users that we're not reaching right now, it's because we're not the library we need, they need us to be. And so we have to find a way to get their opinion. So we grow and learn and serve the community better.
And one of the nice things, I think, in terms of the way that we're timing this is that the Parks and Rec Department just did a similar process to this last year. So we can learn from them and some of the ways that they did their distribution. They were, they were pretty pleased with the response that they got. So we can piggyback on some of the ways they learned to reach out and where they captured some of those folks in trying to get information. So looking forward to talking to Lisa.
Don't want to reinvent the wheel.
And Amy over at Parks and Rec and asking them some questions about how they did that, so.
I'm, I'm assuming this project is, will be pleased to be completed by the end of next year.
Absolutely. Yep. It sounds like they, they work on about a six to nine month timeline, depending on how quickly that, the first piece, that learning piece is the part that takes the longest, obviously, getting all of the feedback and making sure. And if you don't, if it doesn't come in as quickly as you'd like, they will extend it and, and work with it accordingly. I want to be really careful about the way we time that. We had talked about that as a selection committee as well, that we want to make sure that we're not missing our snowbirds. We want to make sure that we're capturing, you know, all of the various age groups and that sort of thing. So there's going to be a little bit of strategy in, in planning that out as well. So I'm looking forward to talking to Amanda about how we go about doing that. Hopefully, she's got some great ideas for us there.
Excellent. In that case, I will accept a motion. I make a motion to approve the proposal submitted by Fast Forward Libraries as presented. Second?
I'll second, but I was also on the committee, so.
I know.
Maybe somebody else should do it. Okay. Thanks, Chris.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the strategic planning consulting contract by Fast Forward Libraries as presented. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you. We're very excited about this project.
We'll be very happy to get this project underway.
Yes.
After our COVID delay. Number three, the updating of the TLN reciprocal borrowing program.
Okay. So the Clarkson Independent District Library is a member of the library, the library network known as TLN. It's a cooperative of shared services for libraries in southeast Michigan. The reciprocal borrowing program is an agreement between these libraries that allows residents of the member libraries to use the services and materials of other member libraries. This has been a longstanding shared service. Due to a recent change in leadership at TLN, it was decided that reviewing policies and updating agreements between libraries would be beneficial. TLN formed a committee to review the reciprocal borrowing program and its policies. As a part of TLN, TLN's committee, Chris Nato, who happens to be our head of circulation, was directly involved in this review process. After the committee conducted a thorough review and discussion, it was determined that the bones of the program were good and some basic language in the policy was updated. TLN has been requested that each member library review the agreement with their board and secure an updated approval of the agreement. The packet includes an announcement of the updated policy, a list of the member libraries, the updated policy itself, and CIDL's, a circulation policy that reflects any limitations on non-resident borrowers as requested by the agreement. So I asked Chris, I said, do you feel like you need to be there tonight? And he said, they didn't really change anything. He said, there was a lot of, as happens with libraries quite frequently, there was a lot of in-depth discussion, but it turned, it turned into a little bit of wordsmithing. And he said, there is nothing that they changed in the agreement that affects anything that we've been doing for the last 20 years. So. But TLN has not had us bring this to the board and review it. The library board approved it when we became a district library. So the last time anybody's looked at this would be 2012. So I don't know if you have any questions about, about the agreement itself? Anything about the, the guidelines that we have or any of the restrictions that we have?
I presume you and Chris both think it's working well?
It has been working fine. If it, if it hadn't been, he would have come to you with policy changes by now. He does occasionally bring the circulation policy in for updates and review. But we haven't had to do that in the last several months. So I believe the last time that we did that was when the board voted to go fine free. So we haven't really done anything since then.
I'm very pleased that members of our staff are active in these local organizations and regional organizations that affect library policies.
Well, he did offer to.
Including our director.
He did offer to come and, and explain it all to you. But I, but he said, there's, there's really nothing to explain. And, and so I said, well, it's, it's fine. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Nothing has changed, so I should be able to answer any questions. I don't think they can ask anything that's harder than what I could answer. So although you could try.
Well, I found it interesting. They rebranded, check it out with the library network. You know, kind of like they wanted to do something that was a change. And so that's, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The six words they came up with, so.
And it had, we do actually, so the library network includes most of the libraries in Wayne and Oakland County. There are a couple of outliers that are not part of TLN. Troy is one of those examples. The Troy Public Library is part of the Suburban Library Cooperative. We have a separate reciprocal borrowing agreement with them that basically says exactly what the TLN agreement says. And our board and their board approved that. So we do still have reciprocity with Troy. But they are, they are not part of our cooperative. Technically, the cooperatives are regional, but not entirely. Really, when you pick a cooperative, you pick the one that best fits with the services that you think you're going to need. Interlibrary loan is, and reciprocity are the big services that we use. And so we use their delivery and the reciprocal borrowing. So those are the primary services. And discounted purchasing and things like that, so.
Well, it's a pretty extensive list.
It is a very extensive list. It is an extensive list. There's actually a new member coming in. The Genesee District Library has been part of Mid Eastern Michigan.
Because they're north of us.
Because they are north of us. But they are finding that their residents tend to drive south more and wanted reciprocity with some of the North Oakland libraries like us.
Interesting.
And so they actually just recently switched to be TLN. And then the services that were being offered by Mid Eastern were not really what Genesee needed. Genesee's a, a pretty big system. And they were, they were, and Mid Eastern Michigan tends to be smaller libraries. And so the services were not really robust enough, whereas TLN serves big libraries like Southfield and Rochester and those. And so, so he recently.
And that's a large addition.
It is a large addition. And it's, it's really nice to have them in our system. So I'm excited about that because they're our neighbors to the north. We are no longer the northernmost libraries. It wasn't branded.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Good stuff.
Yeah, very good stuff.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we accept the library network reciprocal borrowing program as presented and authorize the director to sign the agreement on behalf of the library.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the updated TLN reciprocal borrowing program as presented and authorize the director to sign on behalf of the library. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. These were big projects.
Well, it's nice to cross them off the to-do list.
Yes. Number four, approval of the library closure for staff training day.
Okay. So each year, the library holds an all-staff training day. The closure is often approved by the board when the library closure calendar is set. However, the leadership team was still working on a plan for the kind of training that would take place when the calendar was being presented and wasn't prepared to commit to a specific date at that time. date at that time. The plan for this year's training is now coming together and Friday, May 10th, has been selected. The training will be tied to our strategic planning process by helping the staff to experience the culture and lifestyle of the people we serve. Presentations by local organizations and visits to off-site local locations will help staff, many of whom do not live in Clarkston, to learn more about our community in tandem with the learning and information gathering portion of our strategic plan. We are very excited about the unique design of this day and look forward to it being educational, inspiring, and engaging. So we are asking for permission to close the library on Friday, May 10th.
Because you'll be out and about.
We will be out and about in the community, yes. May tends to be a point where while you would think everybody's finishing up their school projects and whatever, there's a lot of stuff going on at the schools. And so we tend to be slower in May. And so I think it's a, it's a safe time for us to pick a closure day. We did want to be out in the community, so we were hoping to do something in the springtime and not go when the weather would be abysmally dreary because we do want to make some off-site field trip visits and do some fun things out in the community.
Also, I think it's good before the big summer influx.
Yep. And then if there are pieces to our strategic planning process, we can tie those into the day as well because I think the timing would be good for that.
Yeah, that would be. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the library closure date on Friday, May 10th, for an all-staff training day.
Second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a library closure on May 10th, which is Friday, for an all-staff training day. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're looking forward to that.
I will now accept a motion for adjournment.
I move for adjourn.